Call the meeting to order for the March 22nd, 2022 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, let's go on to current business. The first items are clarification for the consent calendar. Do we have any? Councilman O'Neil. Councilman Duffield. Councilwoman Dixon.
None.
Councilwoman Brunner.
Yes, I'd like some clarification on the harbor and the harbor master. I talked to him earlier today and I would like him to give us a little bit of explanation about that.
I believe staff is going to continue that item, is that correct?
Yes, actually, we'd like to request to continue that item. We've received some public comments since the agenda got posted. So to have a little more time, we'd like to continue that to the next meeting on April 12th.
Okay, so you're going to delay it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Blom.
I have none.
And I have none as well. Next, we have proclamation for National Library Week. Is everyone in attendance? Great, please come forward. So this afternoon or almost this evening, we're going to be honoring Tim Heatherton and Paul Watkins. Tim obviously is our library director and is on our staff. And Paul is a super citizen who is active in pretty much everyone that will have him on their board. So here's the proclamation. I'll read it to you. We all know the drill. Done this every year, I believe, and it's been a great success. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries of all types are the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually, as we know, the last couple of years, extending far beyond the four walls of a building. And whereas to adopt, to adapt to the changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continue to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now I therefore, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, behalf of the entire city council, to hereby proclaim National Library Week. And that's a lot of reading, thanks to libraries. Do you gentlemen want to say a couple of words?
Yeah, just a word or two, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Paul Watkins, Chair of the Board of Library Trustees. Thanks for the neat proclamation and thanks to many of you for reading during National Library Week to our children. I'm the guy that was, that created all the problems for the reference librarian at the Pasadena City Library, Public Library, when I was a kid. I'm the one that was standing at the, at the card catalog, Dewey Decimal System, looking for the Adventures of Huckleberry Finn card. And I was endlessly annoying to the reference librarian. We've come a long way since those days, haven't we? So the theme of National Library Week is connect with your library, connect with your library. Computers and digital and broadband and all that good stuff. So it's very appropriate for us today to recognize how far we have come from those days at the Pasadena Public Library. So thank you. We are and remain the cultural, educational, informational heart of this community. In closing, I'd like to mention that this man to my left is retiring on Friday, May 20th, 2022, to move to Asheville, North Carolina with his wife, where they've bought a home and they are renovating it. Tim is awesome. Twenty-four years with the library system, eight years as Director of Library Services. We're going to miss the heck out of it. Anyway, thank you again.
Thank you so much, Paul. And Tim, Mr. Heatherton, would you want to say a couple of words? And then we'll ask trustee Coulter if he'd like to say a couple of words as well.
Yes, I thank the council so much for the continued support over the years. You attend our programs, you take an interest in us, you participate in those storytimes. It's great to have your support and involvement, so deeply appreciated.
Thank you, trustee.
It's just great to be here and be part of the library, very, very.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your involvement. And Tim, now is time, as good as any, to congratulate you on retirement. And you will be missed, always a kind-faced and very capable operator. And if you gentlemen like, we'll tell you a quick picture of the flags and anyone on council can join me.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Tim.
The shade, come up a little bit further, yeah. No, no. Or if you go on this side, because you're in the shadow, you can go on this side. Pardon? Okay. So one, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, the next item is financial evaluation and framework for future inclusionary housing program. Take it away, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Simone Jurges, your Community Development Director. And with me to my right is Principal Planner Jaime Mario. And also with us is our consultant from Kaiser Marston, Ms. Kathy Head. Ms. Head was our city's consultant when we did the Lido House Hotel Project. So she's very familiar with the city. So thank you, council. We're going to be talking about just an inclusionary housing potential ordinance and just want to get your feedback. I have a short presentation for all of you. Just a little background here. Back in September, the council asked staff to go ahead and do a financial analysis. We were presenting to you some ideas about an inclusionary ordinance. And we did consult. We went back and hired Kaiser Marston to help us with that analysis. And the reason why we're doing this, again, it is part of our housing element. This is the document that the city council adopted last month and is under review with HCD currently. And point of the policies is to adopt an inclusionary ordinance. So what is an inclusionary ordinance for those members at home? It is the city's ordinance as a requirement to include affordable housing on any type of residential project. And getting council's feedback is going to be important as we move forward. So on the left-hand side, that little pictorial is just a hundred, just some example of 100 marker rate units. And on the right-hand side, it is a pictorial of some affordable units in that project. And there's either state law or the city's regulations that can require this. So this is really important. So why are we even discussing inclusionary? So this table is from our housing element. And you could see that red outline of a box there. That is the amount of affordable housing that the city has planned. So we've planned 4,400 affordable housing units. And it wasn't the council's choice to do this. It's just because we need a lot of marker rate units. And by the time we were able to develop a program, it ended up to be about 4,400 affordable units. This is an enormous amount of units for any city. And all the cities of Orange County and Southern California are going through this process. But the city only plans for housing. But unfortunately, we have to report our production of housing. And tonight, on one of your agenda items, Agenda Item Number 14, is our report to HCD on how much affordable housing, how much housing we've produced. So going forward, if you look at that 4,400 divided by the eight years of our next planning cycle, that means we have to produce and report 550 affordable units every year. That's a huge number. We've never been able to produce that much affordable units. The last eight years, we've produced 113 affordable units in an eight-year period. Now we're looking at 500, at least 550 every year. So you may ask, what happens if we don't deliver, we don't produce, and we don't report 550 affordable units? Well, this HCD is being very aggressive with all cities. They're going to look at our housing element and look at the city and says, well, your housing element is insufficient. You're not able to produce this level of affordable units. Go back and rezone for more. That's what they're going to tell us. They're going to say, rezone more, add more housing, more housing, more housing, until you can reach this level of production. This is what we've adopted. So we're trying to figure out all the tools in the toolbox so we can generate some level of affordability within the city. So when a developer looks at housing, they can take advantage of state law, which we call it state density bonus law. Or if a developer says, I don't want to do density bonus. And there are developers that may not utilize density bonus. And so they, and so the question is, does the city want to impose some level of affordability? If a developer does not want to use density bonus law, which is very generous and nothing we can do about it, does the city want to impose some level of affordability so that way we always continually produce affordable housing so we can report that to HCD? And the question for the council is going to be, the green box is there. When will this inclusionary apply? What type of project? What percentage? And is there a buyout provision with an in-lug fee? And those are the questions we have. And there are developers, we know Irvine Company doesn't really utilize density bonus because they own the land, their cost basis is lower. They don't need that density boost to make that project pencil because they already own the land. So we know some developers are just not going to take advantage of density bonus. So what's density bonus law? Well, we've shared this with the council before. And I think it's a really good example to look at that green column there in the center, very low income. So the law says is that if you can provide at least 15% of affordable units, which are very low income, then they automatically get a boost in density by 50%. And that's huge. That's extremely generous. And we have an agenda item tonight, which is a very classic affordable housing, density bonus project, Agenda Item Number 15, that takes advantage of this. Not only that, the boost in density, but you could see those bullet points on the left. They get incentives for the development standards. They get incentive on waivers of development standards and they can reduce their parking. State law is very, very generous. Majority you're going to see of developers taking advantage of state law. Again, the question comes back to, if a developer does not want to take advantage of state law, do we want to impose some level of affordability? Because we said to have a high threshold that we got to hit for production and reporting. So we did hire Kaiser Marston, Kathy Head here. She did the analysis for us. She actually did a pro forma with example projects in different housing opportunity areas. And we actually have that analysis. I have the study here that I brought with me. It is available online for everybody to read. It's a lot of analysis. It's heavy, heavy analysis of performers in different parts of town. So what are, how do we approach this? Well, there's a lot of case law from the courts with regards to density bonus. And the courts have said, you can't be so, so difficult with your ordinance that a property owner loses the value of their property. It has to be fair. It has to be equitable. And property owners and developers are allowed to make a return on their investment. And so down there, that blue box there at the bottom, you know, what are some of those thresholds that our consultant looks at? Well, if you're imposing such a high affordability rate, and any developer that does development does performers, they look at the residual land value to know what to pay the property owner. If I'm going to buy your property, what is that residual, what is it worth? Well, if you impose such a high affordability level, that property value drops by 25% or more, well, then it's too high. Our inclusionary would be way too high, right? And this pro forma doesn't work anymore. And in addition to that, if, if the affordability level is so high that to make it anything pencil, you have to boost the sales value by at least 6% or more, then this whole process fails again. So there's definitely the sweet spot that we have to figure out what can project support in Newport Beach. And that's what the analysis was done. A little bit more background for everybody. The city used to have an ordinance that it mandated inclusionary for all for-sale residential projects. And we since repealed that back in 2013. And the reason why is we're coming out of the Great Recession. Our arena was only five units. This was really a hindrance to housing production. So the council repealed this ordinance. But just a little bit of a background here, that inclusionary in the past was 15%. And you can do it either for very low, low or moderate. We did have an in-lug fee program that started out at about $18,000 per unit and increased over time to $28,000 due to CPI. And it was very flexible. And some developers took advantage of just building affordable housing elsewhere or doing conversions. So it was a very flexible ordinance, but we did have an ordinance at one time and that we did generate some in-lug fees from that. So here's the analysis. And when you look at the screen on this analysis, don't think of it as that we have to adopt these numbers. But this is just to share with the council what a project in Newport Beach can support. And this is for rent. These are rental projects. Excuse me. So in a sense that if you imposed an inclusionary in the airport area, a project could support a 7%. And again, this is for projects that are not going to take advantage of density bonus. Now, if somebody wanted to say, I want to purchase and buy my way out of providing a level of affordability, you know, what is that in-lug fee? And you could see the range, the range, the price per fee, price per unit changes depending on what area of town. Now, we didn't study all parts of Newport. We didn't study the peninsula, the islands, you know, Newport coast. We didn't study any of that. We just kind of focused on really on our housing opportunity areas. It's just to show the council, you can, you can adopt a wide range of numbers. You could adopt even less than what this is. But we know what a project, a typical project can support from an inclusionary requirement. And this is for rent. And then when we go to for sale, it's a little bit different. We could go up to an 8% for, for moderate income. You could see there almost in the middle, Newport Center, it's 5%. And you would think Newport Center has high land values, therefore everything's more expensive and we can generate more affordable. Well, it's the reverse. It's so expensive, you can't really make this project pencil because the land's residual values are so high. And those in-lug fees, which are such a wide range of in-lug fee. Again, the council doesn't have to adopt any of these or a wide range. You can go below this. But this is just to share with the council. We did the evaluation. This is what the numbers are coming back and showing that you can impose some level of affordability in Newport Beach for those projects that are not going to take advantage of density bonus law. This slide we've shared with the council before. And it's important to look at kind of those two first, two columns there, the green column and the red column. And you could see Irvine really imposes inclusionary through all types of unit mixes. You know, whether it's two units, whether it's three units, or even bigger. Their inclusionary is 15%. I know they want to go up to 20, the staff wants to go up to 20%. The council hasn't weighed in on this yet. Huntington Beach is sticking to their 10%, but they impose it on three units or more. And you could see how different cities are approaching it differently. Everything's kind of almost less than 10. You have Irvine and Pasadena that are just, they're looking at all residential. And everybody's facing the same issue. They have to produce and report high level of inclusionary. And Pasadena looks to be the highest at this time with a 20% inclusionary, which is above and beyond what state law. You can, state law can do 15% or actually can go more than 15%. We didn't share that on the, on the original table there that we showed earlier. So what does an ordinance look like? This is some of the questions we have for the council. The red is our thoughts. This is staff's thoughts. And we'd love to get your feedback. You know, do we want to apply it through all types of residential projects? In the past, our last ordinance, which actually applied to all residential. So if somebody proposed an actual duplex, which was a condominium, our ordinance said you have to provide affordability or you can use an in-lug fee. And people usually wrote us, the city, a check and that check went into an actual separate fund, which we accumulated over time. So this was kind of the norm back then, which was all residential was paying a fee into that, mainly for-sale products. What's the minimum inclusionary? We know that from the analysis, we could support 7% for rental, 8% for the ownership. From an in-lug fee standpoint, our requirements for production are so high, maybe we don't want to allow in-lug fee for projects bigger than 50 units. If you're proposing a 100-unit project, we actually want production. The problem with the in-lug fee program is that eventually the city controls this large pot of money that we have to figure out how to utilize and spend over time. And that we just worry that pot can be too great. The projects in Newport, the land is so expensive. We're worried that we're not going to be able to utilize and spend all that money, those in-lug fees that keep coming in, that could come to the city. So maybe we say, if less than 50, you can, you can use the in-lug fee program. More than 50, you actually need to produce housing units. And then the last bullet point there, they allow additional alternatives. In the past, we've been very flexible with our inclusionary. And maybe we continue to have that flexibility as we go forward. And finally, this last slide, I want to share that, you know, we, we do have more coming back to you. So we did release our housing element to HCD. We expect comments on April 12th. We do anticipate coming back to the city council on April 26th for another study session to talk about what the letter from HCD is going to say. So far, we know out of the 190-plus cities in SCAG, only seven have been certified. Irvine did not get certified. LA City did not get certified. So we're anticipating probably the worst for Newport as all the other Orange County cities. So I'm just kind of giving you a preview of what may be coming here by April 26th. So that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer questions and our consultants here with us also.
Thank you, Simone. Any questions? Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Simone. Just a couple of questions. Could you just go over that when the density bonus law applies? If we have an inclusionary ordinance, then the density bonus law does not apply?
So let me back up to what the density bonus law table and chart shares. So this is not all-inclusive. So you can see there on the left-hand column, say hypothetically, we're Pasadena. Pasadena has a 20% inclusionary. And the applicant does not want to take advantage of density bonus. So if ours was 20%, they wouldn't get a bump in density, right? Because the state law gives you a bump in density, gives you all these benefits. So if ours was 20%, we don't, we can't, we can't violate our own general plan. We wouldn't give you a bump in density. So as I said, 90% of the developers are going to take advantage of density bonus law.
Okay, could you explain? We had a letter in the, in the material tonight that the building industry does not support inclusionary ordinances. Could you, unless someone is here from the building industry, could you just explain their concern?
So I did, staff did have a conversation with the BIA. And, you know, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but, you know, from the percentage, that 7% or 8%, it's not too unreasonable. I think where the, where the difficulty comes in is that in-lug fee, right? It's that cost to housing. It's another fee added to the project cost. We're charging transportation fees, there's sewer connection fees, there's school fees. And all of a sudden, now the city has an inclusionary in-lug fee too. So it's just making projects more expensive. And that's what BIA kind of looks at this, is like, you know, yeah, the percentage is reasonable, but the fees are just outrageous. And I think that that's their biggest concern.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman O'Neil.
So one of the concerns I've got is a letter back saying you're not in compliance. And I, and I think you're right. I mean, I was just looking this up. Out of the 34 cities in Orange County, not a single one has received a letter back saying that they're in compliance yet.
That's correct.
Yeah, not a single one as of today. And so one of the big concerns I have is literally the only reason we would do this is in order to have a compliant housing element. And I don't think we're going to have a compliant housing element. And if we are going to try to determine what HCD wants from us in order to get to a compliant housing element, I'd like to, I mean, I'm, the, having a lot of options on the table in order to have those conversations is going to be important. So on top of the fact that this is incredibly complicated, I do worry a bit about trying to go down the path of, you know, of trying to comply with a housing element that may be found out of compliance, if that makes sense. So it's, that's, I guess, I will just say upfront, that's, that's a huge concern of mine as we're moving down this path. If we saw a consistent, over and over again, yes, you've met it and we're going to be following, paying attention to you over and over again, I would understand. But I mean, we're, we're about to go down a path where if HCD does what they've been doing to other cities, they're going to be telling us by October, we have to rezone our entire city to comply with a housing element that we, that they've found to be out of compliance. I don't understand how to do that, honestly. And so moving forward, even on an interim, in a process like that, is just, it's, it's mind-boggling. I don't understand how to comply. And that is obviously bad government when we don't, when we don't know how to comply with something ourselves. But I don't know how to comply with it if they're going to tell us we're out of compliance on what we've submitted to them. So as we're moving through this and making, you know, huge changes and decisions for wide swaths of area of land in our city, I'd like to actually know that this would get us to compliance. Thanks.
Councilman Brunner.
Simone, I'm concerned about how we get there if we don't use in-lug fees. Like, how do we get to where we need to be if we don't have in-lug fees?
So from a housing element policy, I think the council has said that they're going to adopt some type of inclusionary. Question is, do you want to do it now or do you want to do it later? I think we have to provide some flexibility and allow the applicant or the developer to have an opportunity for in-lug fees. I think there has to be some type of level of threshold, whether the size is 50 units, 10 units, 15 units. But I think all of the above is going to be necessary.
If, if we delay implementing an inclusionary policy, then what happens between now and whenever we finally adopt one for projects?
Certainly. So again, tonight, we have an agenda item, Item 15. It is a multifamily project. They're taking advantage of density bonus law because they get that boost in density. So we don't even have an inclusionary and they're providing affordable housing units to the city, right? Because the state allows it.
They're choosing to.
They're choosing to.
But they don't have to.
They don't have to, correct.
So if we had builders doing projects right now that just did not want to do any affordable housing, they could go forward with doing that and we're kind of stuck with a lost opportunity? Is that right?
The, it's, it's complicated because the land values are so high that the project may not even pencil if there's no boost in density. And that's what we're seeing. And we've, we've been looking at permanent supportive housing opportunities and just can't make any project pencil in Newport. So it's not that we're going to miss out. I don't feel like we're going to miss out on opportunities. I think the land values are so high, I think developers are going to get forced to utilize state bonus, state density bonus law.
We, several of us have been told by developers that it actually works better in areas where the property value is high because the market value places sell for so much that it helps them to provide the affordable housing units. And they are able to make it pencil out because our, our property values are so high.
I think once, I think what's important, that once we, at some point, we rezone the city for all these RENA units, these housing units, we need to have an inclusionary in place. Right, that, that's where all, you know, 11,000 units are going to be available out there. We're going to have to have something in place by then. Right now, we're not rezoning, we're just talking about inclusionary right now.
So you're not going to let us get to the point that we approve projects we'd rather not approve and miss out on affordable units or in-lug fees that we could have?
I, I've given up on promising anything. We'll see what the state does to us first, I think. I think that's going to be our biggest issue.
I just don't want us to be sorry that we didn't take action sooner.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery.
So on this description on in-lug fees, in the red box...
So on this description on in-lu fees, in the red box, is that what, how do we arrive at those numbers?
Our consultant can answer that question if you, if you'd like Ms. Hatt to respond. You should come back to that lecture in there.
Is this on? It sounds like it's on. Hi, I'm Kathy Head. I'm president of Kaiser Marston, and I did your analysis. So when I did the analysis to figure out what I felt was the support of an inclusionary requirement, then that determined how much affordability would be in each project that I did prototypes on. And so I translated that gap that was established in each one of those into the in-lu fee. So as you see, there's one, there's one box that's not there, is the total cost per affordable unit, or the total cost per total unit in the whole market rate project, or total square feet in the total project. It's exactly the same number, total number, no matter which way you do it. But it's all tied to the affordability gap based on the requirement.
Right. And so, so to Ms. Brenner's point, you know, the market may support these fees, right? When the developer figures it all out. I mean, in the last few years, you know, projects have started, you know, the profit side of it has just gone up month by month as they're building the project, as it's coming together. And things are just selling for much more than people ever expected in the last couple of years. I mean, this town's on fire in terms of property values and acceleration of property values. So I think a good project will, will have a good yield and probably cover developers. I mean, obviously, they've got to negotiate the best price they can. So, you know, I think there's certainly room there. The only thing that worries me over an eight-year cycle, there's going to be a downturn, and, you know, people are then stuck with, you know, they couldn't become stuck with projects that they paid a lot of money for on the land, and the market's not there. And I'm not sure that we really have the housing crisis that everybody says we do.
Right. And then just to be clear, and it was on one of the slides, the whole idea of my analysis is find something that's balanced. So it meets, you know, it helps to meet the city's objectives, but while not creating a constraint to housing. Because if you create the constraint to housing, then nothing gets built.
Right.
And as the BIA will be happy to tell you, 15, you know, zero, you know, 15% of zero is zero. So that becomes, that becomes the balancing act. But you're 100% correct. And what I've recommended, I've done 32 inclusionary housing ordinances in the last 20 years, is you've got to look back at these things.
Right.
Like, I did Claremont in, coincidentally, 2007. So we adopted a whole ordinance in the city of Claremont, and then the global recession hit.
Right.
And it just stopped everything. So we just came back in, you know, in 2011 and just changed the whole ordinance. And so you do, these things aren't static. You really do have to just keep an eye on it. If you find that it becomes a constraint to housing, then you need to look at it again.
Right. And we have plenty of information about where the market's at in terms of sales for projects, not only in this town, but in others nearby.
Sure.
To get a sense of the upward pressure on prices.
Yeah, sure.
Whether it's rentals or for-sale projects.
Right. And so, I mean, I do think then, and I always say this as well, is Kaiser Marston does a conservative analysis. We're never pushing the envelope on how high the percentage should be.
Okay.
Because we don't want to put a position where a city's creating a constraint to housing.
Yeah. Well, that's what we've got to get that bullseye, right?
Yeah. So, you know, and that is, you know, subject to variation. And as Simone said, the numbers up here are numbers I believe are supportable. If you chose to use lower numbers, that'd be fine. If you chose to use higher numbers, I wouldn't be as comfortable.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. If we had no inclusionary ordinance or any constraint on development, and then this, and everyone in the state of California who's in the development or home building business knows that there's an affordability challenge, without a legal requirement, how successful would we be, and I think this burden falls on staff, to encourage, incentivize developers to include affordability? Can we have our own imaginary goal and encourage it without mandating it? I guess that's my question.
So without an ordinance, maybe we can just suggest nicely. And, you know, I just don't see a developer actually including affordable units without an ordinance, per se, unless they want to take advantage of the state law of density bonus, which gives them, you know, that density bonus law gives them a huge amount of protection and a huge amount of incentive.
Yeah. And we haven't seen enough of it to know how, I mean, we have tonight's project, of course. And then I guess the PCH project is using the density bonus.
And this law has been updated just recently. So it's just the, how old is it, I mean, two years, the new law?
Well, it's been updated, you know, time and time again throughout the years. I think the last update was last year.
Well, I'm speculating, certainly, but yes, we are in a period of rapid escalation in land values. And developers who have the financial wherewithal to invest in Newport Beach know it, right now, it's a good investment. And they get that extra thrown-in incentive in the density bonus law, which is huge, a huge incentive. Have we had enough experience with the density bonus law under these circumstances of rapid escalation in property values that maybe it can stimulate affordable housing, given that's the, you know, the state's mandate? Do we get, do we get any bonus points for not mandating it? I guess that's what I'm saying, in terms of working with, individually, I know this burden or this responsibility would fall to staff, that you'd be the front end negotiating these deals. Okay, how many more, how many affordable units can you get in here? And we'll start the discussion.
So one thing to keep in mind, there's a difference between all these housing opportunities and what's currently in our general plan. Currently in our general plan, we don't have many housing units left. So we're going to have to rezone. We're going to have to update our land use element, and that is going to provide all that housing opportunity. I think we have about 350 units left in the airport. We're already talking to a new developer that's looking to utilize what's remaining. So there's really no more units kind of floating around there, not a lot of units. So we just got to think about the next, this next cycle when we update our general plan and our land use element. You know, we're going to add 11,000 housing units to, throughout the city, and from there, as I said, 90% of the developers are going to take advantage of the density bonus because it's so expensive, because that is going to be the real issue. The land is so expensive there.
And so the market forces work.
I do think market forces work. And right now, you're seeing a huge escalation on construction costs, a huge escalation on labor costs. Not everybody's rushing into a project right now. If they're not a seasoned developer, it's really, really tough to make it pencil right now.
But the market forces could work.
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Avery.
Coming from, I kind of call this like the California fairy tale, that this can all work, you know, when we all intuitively know it can't work. And yet, we need to do everything we can to try and make it work. But we, the city of Newport Beach and the residents, get, you know, the wrong side of this deal, unfortunately. And if we hit the pedal on, and we were able to do density bonus on every project, it wouldn't turn out very well, would it? Setbacks, lack of parking.
Correct.
Height, massing, all of it, right? There's just a, it's just not the same. It's a project that's not attractive. It can't, it doesn't fully park. I mean, you know, our parking ratios are, you know, questionable for many folks in this town, just based on people have three cars or four cars, and they've got kids with cars and all the rest of it. So, you know, it's, it's just something we have to go through. And yeah, to Ms. Dixon's point, it'd be great if the market would support this, but we're, and then you're, you know, the cost of building today. So the smart guys are starting maybe to hold back.
Right.
And it's real tough to jump in. So we're, you know, Mr. O'Neill's, I think, quite correct in that our, you know, no expectations on this, really. I mean, we have to keep our expectations low.
Sure.
And then do everything we can to try and get it done. But it's not going to look good at the end. It's not going to look good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blom.
Thank you. So the main, the main thing I've been thinking about up here is we're kind of looking at an unknown unknown right now with the HCD, and not knowing what those comments are going to come back for our housing element in general. So by putting forth something at this point, it just seems like we might be putting the cart a little bit in front of the horse here. You know, I think it is, it's definitely something for us to address maybe in the future when we start looking at these. And I think we're seeing some of the projects that are coming through with the density bonus in those areas before our land use element is wrapped up, they're utilizing those density bonuses in areas where, frankly, we want density bonus utilized. And I'm looking towards the airport district right now. When we start talking about $61,000 per unit in lufy, that's a lot of money. I mean, I don't, I don't care what you're building and how much money's in your pocket or how big of a developer you are. That's, that's a lot of dollars and cents adding to it. And 7%, you know, when I imagine walking around Newport Center, right where we are right now, and imagining that there's some ocean views with some beautiful affordable housing units in them, if you're going to either make money on your project, or you're just going to go the other side, and it's a net loss. And so I think, to Councilman Avery's point, we don't want things just built up, but then we also don't want them just thrown in. We don't want to see shoddy construction coming through. We don't want to see cheaper materials. We don't want to see things that aren't who we are as a city. And I think that right now, I mean, this has been an amazing report, and I think seeing the financial side of this is really important to all of us up here. And that's kind of what, what we ask staff to do. And so, I mean, you guys have soared above that and done a great job on that. Thank you. I just don't think we're at a point right now to make any decisions on this. I think we need some more comments back from HCD. We need to look at our own housing element before, you know, we decide on adding things to make them happy. They're, they're not happy at all right now. And so, you know, if this is part of our toolbox, well, maybe we should use it when they're actually watching and see, all right, now we're willing to put this piece in. Now we're willing to try harder to get these things wrapped up. But, you know, if it's, from my side, I'd like to kick this one down the road a little bit until we have a little more information to work off of.
Councilman O'Neil.
Could you go back to slide number six? I know we've talked about this, but I'm trying to put together the, the density bonus along with the, the in-lu fee. So developer has 100 units. 15 of them are very low-income units. That means that the developer, assuming site can allow for it, can build 150 units. So 150 minus 15 is 135. Do they pay 135 times what the in-lu fee would be in order to build that project?
No. So if they're going to take advantage of the density bonus incentives, they actually have to produce the units on-site. So they wouldn't have the option of paying a fee.
Got it. So the density, so if they had 100 units and they chose to do the in-lufy instead, they'd do, it would be, would it be 85 times the number or 15 times the number?
It would be 100 times the in-lufy amount. So the in-lufy amount is per market rate unit in the project. So if they're opting to not include the affordable units on-site, they're opting to pay the in-lufy, they pay the in-lufy times the number of market rate units in the project, which would be 100. But if they chose to incorporate the units within the project, so they'd have 15 affordable units and 85 market rate units, then they'd be entitled to the density bonus per this table on top of their 100. That make sense?
It does. It's very clearly incentivizing super-dense housing.
It does. And that's one of the, the decision points, is if our inclusionary percentage is lower than what density bonus law would give them. So for example, if our inclusionary percentage was 8% low-income, they wouldn't be entitled to a density bonus under the law. But if they did provide 8%, a very low income, it would offer them a 27.5% density bonus.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't follow that. And I know you explained it properly, I just didn't follow it.
That's okay.
So could you, could you do that again? I want to make sure I'm tracking.
Right. So just imagine our inclusionary housing requirement is 8% affordable. Depending on which income category the developer chooses to provide, if they chose to provide 8% of the units at the low income, income limit, then it would be that blue table in the middle. But the minimum under density bonus laws, they have to provide at least 10% low income. So they would not be eligible for a density bonus. However, if they chose to provide 8% of their units as very low income, then we refer to the green table on the left, in which case, density bonus law would entitle them to a 27.5% density bonus.
So, so hang on. So if we, if we created an 8% very low density bonus, I'm sorry, not density bonus, sorry. Inclusionary, thank you. We would, we would effectively be, I mean, not exactly obligating, but immediately off the top, giving them a 27.5% density bonus?
Should they, should they choose to?
Well, what I'm saying, though, is if, let's say we did, sorry. I'm looking for the, what the, oh, there you go. Okay. So to Irvine, Irvine is 15% with five very low, five low, and 5% moderate. So in every project that they have, you're going to have an immediate density bonus of 20% because they have to meet the 5% very low income units.
That's correct.
Interesting. Yeah. That still is maintaining an extremely dense environment. Okay. And then, sorry, last, one other last question on this in terms of timing. So as we're kind of moving through this, if we were to want, if, if we wanted to hit that 583 units per year number, it would be actually impossible for us to do it at least in the first three years, because in order to get to that number, especially with all these density bonuses, we'd have to rezone, triggering green light, requiring votes of the people, right?
Correct. We have to get all this done tomorrow.
Okay.
Councilman Brenner.
I know we keep kind of asking the same question over and over, but it's, it really is difficult to understand all of this. And so if someone at Newport Center had a piece of property that they wanted to develop to the maximum, and even there, they wanted to include the density bonus, would they be able to go above and beyond what we could, would, would want to hold them to at Newport Center because they were taking advantage of the density bonus?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and we know that the likelihood of them wanting to build any affordable units at Newport Center is very remote. But if we don't have an inclusionary policy that includes the in-lu option, then they could build a smaller project there, but without any affordable. They couldn't go as big as they could with the density bonus, but they could build it with no affordable, and they, and we wouldn't get any credits, we wouldn't get any in-lu fees or any credits for that. But they could just build it as big as they could possibly get approval for. So the chances are likely that they would take the density bonus and max out their project.
Correct. So absent an inclusionary housing requirement.
Right.
They may choose not to incorporate any affordable housing, and the city cannot mandate any affordable housing or the payment of an in-lufy. With the adoption of an inclusionary housing ordinance that has, that includes an in-lufy option as an alternative, a developer who chooses, who might not choose to incorporate affordable housing units, and might not want that extra density, would still have the ability to pay the city that equivalent inclusionary housing fee, which we can then use to assist another project include more affordable housing in their project.
So if we don't have it, we just lose if they decide to just build to what they can expect to build right now. So we just lose any options for affordable housing. And because we have projects that we think maybe in other parts of the city, we could do with maybe even 100% senior housing or, or something. do with maybe even 100% senior housing or, or something, we have projects like that, but those don't pencil out without us having an inclusionary policy that includes in-Lufy's.
To assist them.
To assist to buy that property and build affordable housing. So if there are no inclusionary, is no inclusionary policy, and they just chose to build it the way they would build it without the density bonus, then we just lose. We don't have any housing to meet our required affordable housing needs.
That's correct. So the incentive we would have is the density bonus law, and, you know, as you can see on, on the slide, there's a greater incentive if a developer's providing rental units as very low.
So it's in their, well, we hope it's in their best interest to max out, build a big project that in normal circumstances, we would not want, but now, because we have the ability to get some affordable housing in-Lufy's, they can't use in-Lufy's there, though. So did, did Simone say earlier that if they're using the density bonus, they have to build the units? They can't give us in-Lufy's. So unless we have, they can just be nice, decide to give us in-Lufy's? Is that it?
Well, we, we need an ordinance to require the in-Lufy's and give them an opportunity to pay us the in-Lufy's.
We need the ordinance, okay.
One thing to keep in mind also is that the, the city has and always will have a, a slow-growth measure. We have green light. There's not that many housing units available out there. Newport Center, all the housing units have been taken by Vivante and the 150 Newport Center project. So until we rezone the city, there's not going to be a whole lot of opportunity for additional housing. There's going to be some pockets here and there, but not a enormous amount, not the 11,000 units until we do, we finish the update and go to a vote of the electorate.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Okay. Well, just by virtue of all of our questioning tonight, I think Mr. Blom suggested that we kind of go slowly on this. I, I know I'm not in any position to direct staff to come back with anything, but just listening to Ms. Brenner, what we do today is work with developers on their project, and if there are general plan amendments, then we, we negotiate development agreements. And those funds are used for a wide array of community benefits, parks, community centers, et cetera, and they have been traditionally for the last 40, 50 years, and that has funded the green space, the open space in our community. So we always, I would believe that we still have that option if a developer does not want to do affordable and does not take advantage of the density bonus law, we still have that option. Because what concerns me with the density bonus mandates, I guess, our favorite word, we're going to be losing not only parking, but green space. I mean, developers are just going to maximize, optimize every square inch of property, which is their right under the state law. So I'm concerned, I don't have, I don't know, I guess I'm asking ultimately a question, but if a developer does, does not want to follow, if we do not have an inclusionary ordinance, they want to do their normal project, they could do, they're, it's a free world, they could do affordable and take advantage of the density bonus law, that's up to them. But if they choose not to, we could still have that option for us to have a development agreement. And even in that development agreement, we could say, we want you to build X% affordable. Could we not do that?
So as of today, with, with our charter, Charter 423, when a developer wants to come and do a general plan amendment?
Yeah.
That's when we negotiate a development agreement.
Yes, correct.
Yes, you're absolutely right. We can request fees for different elements that the city can utilize, public safety, park, public benefits, so definitely, or, or affordable. And we've done the affordable side.
So we can still negotiate that in a...
As of today, correct.
Well, and even with a housing element, we know the numbers of affordable units we're going to be mandated to have zoned for and to encourage the development. I guess I'm just trying to get to the natural market force principle.
Well, I, I think once we rezone the city, we don't have an opportunity to negotiate development agreements.
Why?
Because our current code is written as when they do a general plan amendment. So there's not, once we rezone the city, there's not a need to do general plan amendments for residential. Hence, the council's already given us directions to study development impact fees, right? And so we're in that process too, to offset that loss.
Okay, so, okay, you haven't done that yet, but conceivably, there could be, if, if we want you, we have no, in a scenario where we do not have a, an inclusionary ordinance, we do have the opportunity to negotiate a development agreement and negotiate the number of affordable units that will go into that, into that development.
Right. We have nothing on the books right now. Again, it's only going to be through general plan amendments.
I get that.
And once we rezone the city, we'll have, if the city council wants to, we haven't proposed anything, any future impact fees, and that's where you can impose additional fees.
Right, right. Okay, so there is that option.
We will come to the council at some point in the future for those impact fees, correct?
Because we've never done that, there's never been impact fees.
Right.
Right, I get that. So that is an option, so.
There is.
I think a couple discussions ago, Mr. O'Neil, you were saying, slow down on this. Do you still feel that way?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to talk again about it after we get the comments back from the state on our housing element. And just one carry on to that, which is, green light sort of constricts this anyway. I mean, we're looking at it from the perspective of how much could they do in the next two or three years, and the answer is very little. And on top of that, if we wanted to rezone everything that would allow for the amount of density bonus that we're actually talking about, like, we can't hit 583, period, straight up, because we'd have to go to the vote of the people anyway, and we need to do a special election and rezone everything.
There's just too much uncertainty, we just...
Yeah, anyway, so that's a long answer, but the answer is yes.
So I would, well, we'll hear the public, but I'm of the feeling that we're still have more work to do. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Avery.
Hi, I mean, seems to me the sweet spot then is doing very low-income units, if you're a developer. Right, that, that would be the easiest way to maximize your density bonus and take advantage of the various incentives under the law.
Right. And again, those incentives are relief from setbacks?
Right. So depending on the number of affordable units you're providing, it's a sliding scale, you're off, you're entitled to a number of incentives that are intended to reduce the development cost for the project.
Right.
In addition to your entitled to unlimited number of development standard waivers, which are reductions in setbacks or increases in height needed to accommodate the density bonus that you're being granted.
And then what happens with the parking? What can they get on parking?
Uh, it's a, it's a reduced parking rate that's below what our standard parking rates are in our zoning code.
And then a low-density unit is both, is it rent? How, how, is it, what about size?
There, there's no restrictions on size, so that, you know, someone can provide a very low-income unit to be, you know, as small as, as they like, unless our ordinance states something different.
So someone could do a very low, nine very-low or 10 very-low income units of 400 square feet?
Correct.
Like a studio apartment?
Right. So in an apartment project, they can all be two bedrooms, except for the affordable. They can propose those as studios, and they would still be entitled to the density bonus.
The no minimum of square foot?
No, just what's required under the, the building code. When we develop our ordinance, those are, those could be options that we add.
Right.
But under state law, there's no minimum.
Thank you.
Councilman Brenner.
I think the idea of studio apartments, I used to have one, and they are just like in such demand, so it may, we may find more people doing that in the future. I think that Councilwoman Dixon's questions alleviated a little bit of my concern about the interim period. So it sounds like we can utilize development agreements and in-Lufy's that we collect for parks and other things, but also to meet our affordable housing requirements as far as a fund that would help us to buy property, to build affordable. We could use that until we rezone the city.
That's correct.
But, but we also have to deal with green light.
That's correct. So a couple of projects, 4400 Von Carmen, which the city council approved, that had public, a development agreement, and a percentage of that development agreement fees were applied towards affordable housing. The 150 Newport Center Drive Todd Bridgeway's project, very similar, is a development agreement, and council approved it, and it had, I want to say about $300,000 allocated towards affordable housing. So those development agreements are including affordable housing as we go forward.
So that takes care of the, of the real issue that I was addressing about things coming through the pipeline that we would not get any benefit from.
That's correct.
I, I'm comfortable with delaying then on this if, as long as there's no loophole there that, that can hurt us in the long run.
True. And I think just talking, speculating loopholes are if the zoning allows for a certain amount of residential, they don't need a development agreement. It's, it's per zoning, per code, they're just building to code, and we have some of those projects proposed going forward. And there's nothing the city can't do on those.
How many units do we have that would fall into that category?
I'm just going to throw out a number, maybe about 100, 100 units.
All right. Thank you.
Public comments on this item, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muldoon and council. So I have studied this a lot. I, I strongly feel that we need to have an, an in-Lufy in place now. We have projects now that are going to happen that do not need general plan amendments. We need to take that money, and we need to put that into 100% affordable projects to reduce the number of units that we have to build. The housing element had 4,835 or 38, I don't remember what it ended up at, units. Of those, 24 some odd were low and very low. I don't know quite how that got to be morphed into the 2043 here, it's, I think that includes a buffer, but those very-low units were determined with a 40% inclusionary. So the 11,000 total units that we had in our earlier tables were based on a 40% inclusionary. That's ridiculous. We can't do that, we don't want to do that, that, you know, you can see what happens. I think that the 7 and 8% that staff is recommending is very reasonable. It allows you to have in-Lufy's, and you capture the projects that will come up without any general plan amendments that would have some in-Lufy's. You could take those in-Lufy's, put a project together with a developer as a public-private partnership, maybe the city pays for the land, the developer, you know, develops something, and we get somehow, we work out a public land trust that helps with either the, the management of it or some of the construction or something. I mean, there's, there are projects that can be put together with that now that will lop off a lot of those 100% projects, that would lop off a lot of those affordable, very-low and low-income. So I don't think that we want to miss the opportunity. I would strongly support doing something fairly soon, doesn't have to be today, I think this isn't even for a vote today, but I think that we should study this seriously and, and do something pretty quickly. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Plan speaker on this item, please come forward now.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, the project that is on your agenda later tonight has been cited as an example of how even if we don't do anything, the state density bonus law is incentivizing people to provide affordable housing. I wanted to point out, I think correctly, that although the developer tonight is taking advantage of the state density bonus law, that's not his primary reason for providing affordable housing. His reason is that his project is in a planned community, and that planned community requires any residential development in it to have not a 10, not a 15, but a 30% affordable component. Therefore, he has to do that, and that's why he's using that also to take advantage of the density bonus law. Could be wrong, but I think you'll hear that tonight. Second clarification is, we heard, and the staff report said that the city engaged Kaiser Marston, but at the very beginning of the report, it says they were actually engaged by Sagecrest Planning Environmental Services, which is a contractor sometimes to the city, but not for this purpose, it's for augmenting staff. So I'm wondering, and I tried looking online in the clerk's contract archive, I could not see how this was contracted for. So the question is, who, who did contract for this? Did we go through middlemen to get to Kaiser Marston? And second, how much did the report cost us? Next, I kind of share Councilman O'Neil's confusion and many of yours exactly how this works in terms of the two inclusionary ordinance in the state law interacting together. We kind of heard on the slide that you picked one or the other, the report said that the same units can be used for both, which I think we were hearing, but apparently not imaginary units that are paid for by an in-Lufy. I'm not sure that that's, apparently that's how that works. And then we heard that the in-Lufy's, even if we collected them, might not be enough to do anything useful with. I kind of thought that's what I heard, which to me means, as high as and outrageous as they seem to be, if they're not enough to actually produce the affordable housing, then apparently they're not as high as they need to be. And then the final comment I wanted to make, since we paid whatever we paid for this report, and we have, which I think is an excellent report and very comprehensive, I read the executive summary, I didn't read all the way through it, but does, did it provide the answer that we were asking over and over again during the comments on the housing element? In Kaiser Marston's opinion, if we did nothing at all, how many housing units would the market have to provide before we meet, meet our low, very-low and moderate-income categories? And how different would that be if we have the inclusionary ordinance at, say, 15%? Thank you.
Yes, thanks, speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Charles Klobb. So firstly, the elephant in the room is the project that you all know about behind you, where the developer has no interest at the former Marriott Hotel of providing any affordable. They proposed to build luxury condos for sale, and they fully expect to pay an in-Lufy into a fund that can be used for some sort of affordable project. It's my belief, since you anointed Simone at a previous decision, the director's decision to convert those, there's no general plan amendment called for there, and without this kind of an ordinance, I don't believe, feel free to correct me, that he has the ability to collect in-Lufy's on those units, because there won't have to be a development agreement. And then lastly, I disagree with Councilman O'Neil, I think the reverse is true. By providing an inclusionary, you are more showing HCD that you're not going to let anybody through the door with no affordable. You're showing them that you, you've, you've provided us with this, with the density bonus, but the city is providing a incentive to provide affordable. Without this inclusionary, as the consultant and Simone have said, people can build, he used the example of the Irvine Company, who doesn't want to build affordable, they may choose to just build market rate. So I believe by adopting this, you're actually showing HCD a commitment to affordable housing. Thank you.
Any other speakers on this item?
The, when I look at the affordable housing and I look at our town, our inclusionary zoning, our Newport Center is a lot different than the airport area, a lot different than West Newport Mesa. It really is, kind of test my credulity, you think we're going to have one policy, it's going to work everywhere. To the extent that you have nice improvements on a property, somebody is not going to have the incentive to kick out their tenants, tear down the property, go through the design hassle, all the financing, take the risk, the construction risk, and then lease it up, unless it's a hell of a deal for them to do that. And that's going to be dependent upon what they already have in place. So I, I think that, that you should take your time in coming up with any policy on inclusionary housing, because I don't think a one-size-fits-all is, is going to necessarily work. To the extent that you make the policy too burdensome, then you're going to get no units, affordable or otherwise. The, in, in Newport Center, I don't think, if people are allowed to take advantage of the views, it's probably not going to be a density bonus situation, because they're not going to want to build 50% more on their 50-unit-per-acre zoning. They're not going to do that. They're going to build high-end luxury housing. There's nothing wrong with high-end luxury housing. It's just one of the, you know, four components of affordability that the state expects. It's just one of the, you know, four components of affordability that the state expects. So, it's, it's, you know, I've been impressed by your, you're struggling to try to figure out what you don't know, you don't know what you don't know quite yet, but you're making some progress on it, but I think it's something that, that you should be working with the property owners, because all of these projects are going to have to go on private property. And you're going to need to understand when you're crafting your policies, what's going to get you to the, to the finish line, which is as many affordable units as are feasible. Now, you can, you can see what the state has done by, you know, keep in mind, they've required us to plan for 30% very low and 19% low, 49%. That's what they've required us to plan for. Kaiser Marston goes through an entire study that says, you know, 15's about the limit. Why do they require us to plan for 49 when 15's about the limit for what a project can, can entail? Now, they're two different numbers, but it just kind of gives you an idea that, that, you know, it's going to take us forever to get there. Finally, to, to the point that Mr. O'Neill brought up, we have rezoned the town. We've gone through the entire town and looked for every property that had any feasibility for housing and gave it an overlay for housing. It is critical, when the overlay text gets written, that we have a stop at some point. You know, I heard about 4,000 some affordable units and 15,000 total units, we're only, only mandated to plan for 4,800 units, and the overlay text is going to be our off-ramp as to when we're finally done. We did that in 2006 out by the airport with a total number of 2,200 units. There is actually a limit there, so I think there's a lot to think about, and I, I just recommend that you, you involve the private property owners and try to come up with a plan that actually, you know, achieves the most affordable units feasible.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item?
Okay, seeing none. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak, and then you can definitely speak next. I think you have a consensus, this is not the right time. I don't think it's ever the right time, to be honest. I think that the California fantasy, or whatever great comment Councilman Avery said is very true. I believe at the end of the road, this is going to be a complete disaster statewide. We'll plan for these units, the market will decide. Their numbers are not feasible, even upon the rosiest prediction that our consultant has provided, that is not proven to be effective in cities that have tried to implement those kind of numbers. So, you know, Newport doesn't need to be the test case, we don't need to be the first in this, in my opinion, and I, I think the free market's going to decide, even if we make bad policy, so there's no reason to make bad policy, in my, in my opinion. One more comment from Councilwoman Dixon, I think you have enough direction staff, correct?
I do, thank you.
And I concur with the mayor. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Mosher's point. Could you explain how plan, how we got a requirement, how there was a requirement in a planned unit development for 30% affordable? How did that come, is that like, we do this individually when we do the general plan to identify, or how does that happen?
Yeah, that resulted from our fourth cycle housing element update. We had capacity in the airport area, and that's what we used to show HCD that we had opportunities for lower-income development. However, HCD at that time identified the fact that we didn't have zoning in place as a development constraint, and so to overcome that comment, we developed the affordable housing overlay within the Newport Center Place Plan Community. And so typically in that area, the general plan would state that you'd have to come forward with a development agreement, develop your own zoning, there's a number of park requirements. The overlay essentially provides a waiver of a lot of those policies in exchange for providing at least 30% affordable, and so that's the...
Do we have any other areas in the city that have a 30% affordable?
It, it's just that, the airport area, part of the airport area.
Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you, but I concur with the mayor and said, let's, let's let the market decide.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brenner?
I have one more question that arose as a result of Charles' comments. So, we all know about the upcoming Marriott project, and what he's saying is that with the director's discretion, there is no ability to require in lieu fees? Is that what he said? And why then are these developers talking about the in lieu fees that they expect to pay if we can't require in lieu fees?
So, the director's determination, which has been upheld by the council, said that we recognize that there's an opportunity to support these hotels and allow some of those units to convert, but you got to do certain things. One of the things in the director's determination is, you're going to have to pay a fee for public benefit, affordable housing, so on, and that instrument can be, could be a development agreement, or it could be a different instrument, and that's what the determination says. So I disagree with Mr. Klob, I think we have, I have authority to require that and mandate that for that Marriott project.
All right, thank you.
And I believe that many developers are generous, we're going to see generosity with this and other deals coming forward, and developers not always how they're portrayed, and they don't necessarily need to have something to give back to the community, to have a threat, in my opinion. Okay, now it's time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Please come forward. Excellent, seeing none. Mr. Hart, do you have a closed session announcement?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. The city council adjourned to closed session to meet with the city's labor negotiators regarding negotiations with the Newport Beach Police Management Association and the city clerk. All is set forth on the agenda under items 4A and B. The city clerk will recuse herself from item 4B based on her personal financial interests. Thank you.
Thank you. We're recessed until 5:45.
Call to be in order for the March 22, 2022 regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, there's no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. I'll invite Pastor David Mayne from Calvary Chapel of Costa Mesa to lead us in invocation.
Thank you, thank you. Good to be with you, all of you, blessings upon you tonight. Father, we just come before you and ask your blessing upon our gathering, the business before us, the decisions that will be made this evening, but Lord, also your blessing upon the fire department, police department, our coast guard, our harbor patrol, all of the municipalities, Lord, that govern and keep us protected, keep us safe. We pray for all the citizens in both Newport and Corona Del Mar and our neighboring cities as well, Lord, that you would be with us and keep us close to you. So, Lord, bless tonight, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. Councilwoman Brenner, would you please leave us in the pledge?
Yes. At this time, when world events remind us of how fortunate we are to live in our great country with the freedoms and the lifestyle that we enjoy, would you please join me in the pledge to our great nation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Clerk Nosa, the public.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Council announcements or reports from council members on community activities and items that council members request to be placed on a future agenda per policy A1. Councilman O'Neill?
Thank you. Very briefly, I was able to chair the TCA, the Transportation Corridor Agency Board Meeting, where we adopted the long-range vision for the, for the board, significant emphasis on debt paydown and environmental requirements. And then Newport Beach Baseball Association had their opening day this past weekend, which was a lot of fun to attend, and then Councilmember Brenner and I attended the Corona Del Mar Residents Association meeting for an update. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Duffield. Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A few things. Do we have a slide to pull up? I'd like to invite all of our residents to a forum on civic engagement on Thursday, March 31st, from 5:00 to 6:30 at the community room here at the Civic Center. The event is designed to educate and encourage members of our community to get involved in local government through serving on one of Newport Beach's many boards and commissions. The forum will be hosted by the Newport Beach City Clerk, Lani Brown, and features Yorba Linda Councilmember Peggy Wang, who has served on many local and regional boards and is very passionate about public service. And the event is sponsored by the Women in Newport Beach, Women in Newport Networking. If you've ever thought about serving your community on a board or commission, or you're just curious about the process, please join us next Thursday. And then, personal announcement, sitting in the front row are two very special little boys, my grandsons. Two of the three have come from New York City, Walker and Brooks Tompkins, the loves of my life. I did ask them to tell me if they were on the city council, what would they like to see passed in terms of a new law. Brooks said to ask the state of California to make chocolate frozen bananas to state And Walker said, keep Newport Beach clean, which is interesting, because I agree with him as well. So, thank you, boys, with, with their grandfather are here tonight, so thank you, Pat, for bringing them. I do have an A1 item, had to direct staff to monitor visitor destination cities who are experiencing the fractionalization of homeownership and report back to the council in six months. This is a new trend, let's just see what's going on, not asking for any regulations, just to know what's going on, direct staff in that regard, and it will come back at the next meeting for a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, former Mayor Dixon. I'm sure you, you guys know that your grandmother's once the mayor of this great town, and if you watch Paw Patrol, like my son does, you're probably told for Paw Patrol as a mayor in that show, and that's basically what your grandmother did, really good job, and she's a great councilwoman.
Councilmember O'Neill and I went to a meeting of the Solid Waste Recycling City Council Working Group today, and I just wanted to point out that there will be a study session in about two, in, I think in April, the second meeting in April, that will go into all of the problems that we have had, the, how they're being rectified, where we stand on our, trying to meet our deadlines, and we understand that there are problems, no one feels like this has gone as smoothly as we would like, but that they are being rectified, and so I just like everyone's patience. We expect to have all of the trash cans distributed within the next couple of weeks, because I know in my district that we still have not received the organic cans yet. So, and I'd like to clarify, on the minutes that I also attended the memorial service for Officer Nicholas Vella at the Honda Center filled with law enforcement officers from throughout Southern California. And please change the minutes to reflect change of my statement expressing concern about the fair and equitable treatment of all parties when leasing out public space as per Jim Mosher's recommendation. As a board trustee for the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, I attended a trustee meeting, but also the PR committee. Most disturbing information I learned this month is that the 80s egypti mosquito can also breed inside our houses. So any standing water, inside or outside, remember, as small as a bottle cap, can be a breeding ground. Please wash and dry pet water bowls frequently, flush and run water occasionally in guest bathrooms, and even be sure to clean out the drip trays under our refrigerators. These little critters are really tenacious, so we want to make sure that we get rid of as much standing water as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the administration meeting of the Orange County Sanitation District, also our homeless head-out committee with Councilmember Brenner, Councilmember O'Neill, finance committee. And my favorite one, though, was the, I represented the city in the opening of the Orange Coast College new student union building, and it represents close to the final building on that campus, which has been absolutely revolutionized because of a nearly three-quarters of a billion-dollar bond issued that was passed 11 years ago, and it's incredible, it's like a major, you know, state campus now. And so, it was really something to be there for that and to see just an excellent job, I think, of, of the Coast Community College District in carrying out the, the bond issue to the end, and really good projects. And it, I don't think it was too far over budget. It went well, but it, it's just a total reinvestment for our community. There's so many people here, of course, in Newport, Orange Coast, College has been amazing, and I remember being in line there in 1973, and, you know, the lines just wrapped around the entire campus, trying to get through the registration process, you know, there just was nothing online, and kids would be waiting, and, but just, just a great school, and I'm a little biased, but it's, it's a good thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. I too got to attend the finance committee meeting, and for those of you that hadn't, or have never had a chance to go to one of those meetings, they are unbelievable, you should see how well both our city manager and Scott Carlet, our finance director, do at maintaining our budget and really pushing forward. Reassessing the fees, and they are extremely informative for what we have going on, so I just want to thank staff on those. I got to see the last vault get put in down on Babo Island, as we're going through the undergrounding project on the west side, which is amazing. It is quite a feat to see an island that's basically underwater go down about 20 feet and drop in a giant concrete block, so when we do the rest of the island, I encourage anyone to go kind of take a look at that. And I think our utilities department and public works for the work that they were doing out on PCH. I know it wasn't easy that last morning, as they were placing one of the largest water valves that anyone has ever seen, it was insane. But amazing coordination, especially in the face of nothing going right that night, and pushing those contractors as well as they did. And I also got to attend another regatta up in Long Beach with our Newport Aquatic team. Both the boys and girls took home the California best of and the overall for their rowing team, which is, is huge. And they're going to be competing next week down in San Diego with a bunch of collegiate teams as well for, for the West Coast National Championship, so that's amazing. Thank you.
Great, right outside SeaWorld. Okay, I have two, I think there's a slide for me. All right, so we have another opportunity, or it's a reminder, I should say, the Sea of Newport Beach and our trash hauler CRNR will be hosting a paper shredding, e-waste disposal and compost giveaway on Saturday, April 9th, from 8 to noon. Residents can also receive a free kitchen pail of organic waste recycling, that's for the Avery household. The event will be at the Corporate Yard, 592 Superior Avenue. It's free to Newport Beach residents, so please bring your ID, and for details, go to newportbeachca.gov/shred. And for a future A1 item, I'd like to propose that the council consider supporting a resolution in support of a push to suspend the gas tax in Sacramento. That's a 51-cent gas tax suspension that would greatly drop the, the cost for gas at the time being, I think another state may just pass that. Okay, now matters, councilmembers have asked it placed on a future agenda. Councilwoman Dixon asks the council to consider reviewing Newport Beach Municipal Code Section 5.46 regarding film permits. Please raise your hand to show support.
That is unanimous, 7-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which councilmembers may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 14. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the...
If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each of the items for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Councilmembers have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar conflicts to announce in items 1 through 14?
Noting staff's recommendation that item 3 be continued to the next meeting, I have none.
Thank you. Councilman Duffield?
With that, I'll go ahead anyway, and I'd like to recuse myself on item 3 for business interests.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
I have none. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brenner?
None.
Councilman Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Pro Temblom?
I have none.
And I have a few. I'd like to lodge a no vote in item 5. Do you want to do that, too?
Yep.
Yeah. A recusal on item 9 and item 10 due to conflict related to telecommunications. And I guess just to be clear on the record, item 11, I have a generally -- public general exception. Is that correct, Mr. Hart? Could you just note that for the record?
Yes, the public general exception would apply to that item.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I'd like to propose the changes to the minutes. We're going to continue item number 3, also lodge a no vote with Councilmember Duffy. We'll lodge -- I mean, I'm sorry, a recusal for Councilmember Duffy on item 3. We're going to lodge two no votes for both Mayor Muldoon and myself on item 5. And then, we have a recusal for Mayor Muldoon on items 9 and 10.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Public comments on consent calendar, please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I was going to comment on item number 3, but since that's been continued, I will comment on item number 4, which is the proposed adoption of a new city council district map for the city of Newport Beach for the next 10 years. I wanted it to be certain that you know what you're doing tonight. For the first time in the history of our city, the council districts, instead of having boundaries that are verbally defined according to the proposed ordinance up for adoption tonight, will, as I understand it, be defined by assigning census blocks to districts. And since it's not clear from the staff report or from the map that was provided, I wanted you to understand that if you look at the census block assignments, you will find that the very first of those is a vast area of water off the coast of Newport Beach that never in the history of our city has been assigned to a council district, is being assigned this time to District Number 1. It's nearly half the city. It's, I assume, very good for the ego of the council member who is from District 1, that they will be from an area comprising nearly half the city. But I would ask you why you're doing that? Because it could be just as easily assigned to District 6, which is adjacent to the water, or District 7, which is adjacent to the water. Or, much more logically, it could just not be assigned to any district at all since nobody lives there. And in fact, I think that is the best thing that you should do. And assigning half the city to one district hardly seems to me consistent with the city charter recommendation that the district lines be drawn so that they are as compact as practical. That doesn't seem to be. We never had that problem before. We have it now. And there are some other minor problems with going to the census block orientation of our map, but I think that is the biggest and most obvious one. So, we will have a very peculiar map if one actually shows where all the census blocks are assigned. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless we have an Atlanta City situation. I understand your point and understand it. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on now to current business.
Sir, we need a vote.
Oh, my God, we have a vote? That's right. Let's vote.
And prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items 4 and 5. Ordinance 2022-7, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach changing and redefining the city council district boundaries as a result of the United States Census Bureau's 2020 Census and 2022-8 amending Section 15.02.095 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code authorizing an extension of the time limit to complete construction for an additional year. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Any comments on non-agend items? Yes, please come forward. This is time for non-agend item comments.
My name is Lynn Swain, and I am here as a resident of Newport Beach to express my strong opposition to Measure B. In 1992, the people of Newport Beach voted overwhelmingly to limit our city elected leaders to serve a maximum of eight years in office. Unfortunately, Measure B was placed on the June ballot by ambitious city council politicians who want to avoid term limits to continue to stay in office. This would give the mayor excessive political power and dilute citizen power by consolidating seven council districts into six. Centralization and concentration of power is contrary to democratic principles. It's bad for our well-run city and bad for residents and bad for business owners. Consider if the mayor doesn't support your position on an issue and the mayor has control over the council, what hope do residents and business owners have for fair play? If you think one-party rule is bad in Sacramento, one cabal rule is worse in Newport Beach. Measure B would double the term limit of a single-city politician from eight years to 16. Worse, it would give the mayor way too much political power at the expense of our other city council representatives in our local neighborhoods. Measure B is an end run on term limits that's designated to benefit one ambitious city politician. Eight years at City Hall is enough for any elected official. Let's keep term limits and stop the political power grab by voting no on Measure B. B is bad for Newport. Remember that. Thank you.
So, just as a reminder, we're not going to be engaging in campaigning at council meetings. So, everything you said was fine, except for the voting no or voting yes on a measure or voting no or yes for a candidate.
I'll keep that in mind. We have a lot more coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. If you intend to speak on this item, please come forward now.
Good evening. My name's Nancy Scarborough. I have a bit of good news in a very dark landscape. An organization called the California Alliance of Local Electeds has been dogging the state for two years to audit the number of homes that were included in the RENA requirements. And after two years of lobbying, they have been successful. There was an audit performed. It was done because mostly -- it was done because a lot of cities were questioning the accuracy of those numbers and where they came from. And they did perform this. They found irregularities, and I don't know what will happen with this. It's just brand-new. This has only been a week. But -- and it's a state agency auditing another state agency, so you go figure it out. But anyway, it's interesting. One of the things that really struck me in this is that the US government has estimated that we need 3.8 million new residences countrywide. And the state of California says that we need 3.5 million residences right here in our state. So, something seems askew. And so, hopefully, we'll get to the bottom of it, and maybe there's something that will happen and we'll be rescued from all this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing no other speakers, let's now move on to the public hearing. Item 15, Resolution Regarding Land Use Entitlements for the Residences at 1300 Bristol Project.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and city councilmembers. Simone Georgis, Community Development Director. The item is the entitlement package for multifamily residents at 1300 Bristol Street. With me is Chelsea Crager. She's our associate planner that's been working on this project, along with Rosalyn Ung, who's our principal planner. We also have our sequel consultant, Dana Privet, here in case there are any sequel questions. Chelsea has a very short, concise presentation, about five slides. We do want to hand it off to the applicant, who has a little bit more extensive presentation to make to the city council. So, I'm going to have Chelsea go ahead and make her presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Chelsea Crager with the Planning Division. The project before you is the Residences at 1300 Bristol Street. My first slide here is just a little bit of orientation for all of us. The project site is, of course, in that red star area. This is an area called the Airport Area of the city of Newport Beach, and we have our city boundary shown in that blue line. Overall project description, the project includes 193 apartment units, so they are four rent units. Those 193 units are based off of 77 base units. The base units are based on existing development and trip neutrality. 39 of those units are density bonus, so this is density bonus per the state law. 39 is 50% of the 77 base units. And the remaining 77 units come from a transfer of development rights from nearby Uptown Newport. These are unbuilt units from Uptown Newport. And I'll show the next slide to show where those are coming from. Of those units, 169 are market rate, 24 affordable, and that's based on the density bonus state law. The project is in -- it's an entirety, 78 feet tall. That's six levels above grade and two levels below grade, 346 parking spaces, and just under a two-acre site. As mentioned, the transfer of development rights are coming from Phase 1 of Uptown Newport, which is highlighted in red towards the top of the screen. So, these are unbuilt units, only a part of Phase 1, not Phase 2, which is coming -- which would be coming in a few years. These transferred units were included in the traffic analysis as a part of the TPO study. Uptown Newport is subject to a development agreement or a DA, and there are fees associated with the development agreement, public benefit fees and park fees. The fees associated with those 77 units would still be attached to those units, and the applicant would still be responsible for paying those fees from the development agreement. The transfer of development rights does require city council consideration and is why the project is before you today. As a part of the density bonus state law, the project is entitled to some development standard waivers. And these development standard waivers are intended to provide relief. And if these standards were fully implemented or fully enforced, then the development of the site at the density proposed would be physically precluded. So, in this case, they're asking for six total development standard waivers, which are listed here on this slide. Also, as a part of the density bonus, the project is in -- the applicant is entitled to request up to three incentives. In this case, they have asked for two incentives. The first one is related to the affordable unit mix. In this case, they're requesting to provide more studio and one-bedroom affordable units as opposed to two-bedroom units. This is not a direct financial contribution to the applicant and is therefore one of the mandatory concessions. The second concession that you see here is a waiver of the value of a half-acre park in Luffy payment. This is a direct financial contribution to the applicant and is a non-mandatory concession, and there is more discretion at the council -- the council has with this waiver. So, as I mentioned previously, the transfer of development units -- excuse me, the transfer of development rights, those units are subject to the development agreement fees. So, the 77 units are required to pay park fees as a part of the development agreement, and this waiver is not requesting to waive those development agreement fees. Those development agreement fees, park fees, and public benefit fees, those would still apply if this waiver is granted. The city -- or, sorry about that. Staff did look at the project in relation to the general plan, which is mixed-use horizontal designation, found to be consistent. Also, the zoning code, the Newport Place Plan Community, was found to be consistent. State bonus law and CECL was all found to be consistent with those. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for question -- for questions. The applicant, the concern group, also has a presentation that they are prepared to give.
Great. Will the applicant please come forward? And as they make their way up here, do we have any questions from the dais for staff at this time? Okay.
Thank you for taking the time this evening to consider our proposed multifamily community at 1300 Bristol. The proposal before you is the product of the experience we've gained from our existing residential community, One Uptown Newport, extensive meetings and collaboration with various staff members representing the city of Newport Beach, and other community-based stakeholders. I would like to thank the city staff and my team for embracing the kind of debate and collaboration it takes to deliver a project that serves both the community and our customer. It is clear to us that our success is intrinsically linked to creating a project that puts the community and our customer first. As it pertains to our commitment to the city of Newport Beach, we believe and are an active participant in the city's vision for intelligently-planned, mixed-use environment in the airport area submarket. In the past two to three decades, mixed-use projects in America have proven to be an effective answer to urban sprawl, providing the population with the ability to live, work, and play within reasonable proximity. Our first entry into this market area was One Uptown Newport in the Uptown Newport Master Plan, where we currently own 458 apartment homes. When we purchased land in the Uptown Newport development, it was based on our belief that people would choose to live in the airport area for its convenient location, its proximity to employment, its slightly more urban lifestyle, and its Newport Beach address. Of course, One Uptown Newport was the first of its kind, and therefore, we were blazing a new trail. Fortunately, our consumer responded positively. One Uptown Newport's 366 market-rate apartment homes have the highest per square foot rent in the city of Newport Beach while providing 92 homes for very low-income residents. It provides real-time evidence that the population embraces the city's vision and that mixed-income projects work. The proposal before you this evening is simply another step toward further activating this area through intelligent urban renewal. It will have 169 market-rate rental units and 24 affordable units and will mirror the quality of One Uptown Newport. Time and time again, we see examples of successful neighborhood redevelopment where residents first choose to live there, and soon thereafter, the retailers follow. We feel very fortunate to be part of this process, and we understand the responsibility we have to honor the city's vision. Our presentation this evening will be orchestrated by Amanda Tropiano, Principal at De novo Planning Group, with more detailed presentations by our architects, Erwin Yao, Principal at Thomas Cox and Associates, or TCA, and Matt Jackson, Vice President at MJS Landscape Architecture. Thank you again for the opportunity to present our vision for 1300 Bristol.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Cern.
Amanda?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having us. I'm going to, in some cases, serve as an emcee for tonight's brief presentation, and we'll walk through this. Wanted to just share some more specific details about the project and make sure you knew the team was available to answer any questions you may have for us. So, next slide? Or am I clicking this on my own? All right. Thank you. So, I'm going to focus on just presenting an overview of the project team, providing a little bit more information about the concern group, some details about the project, including its architecture and landscape architecture plans, a description of the support that the project has received from the community, and then ultimately, a list of the benefits we believe it provides to the community of Newport Beach. So, the group has already been introduced. We do have representatives here to answer any specific questions you have on the project. What we wanted to emphasize is that this team was thoughtfully selected, really based on deep experience working here in Newport. Knowing the community, knowing the success of projects, and how to reflect the community's vision in this project has been a core foundation of assembling this team of professionals.
vision in this project has been a core foundation of assembling this team of professionals to develop the project that's before you tonight. The Passern Group, founded over 35 years ago, is a really unique applicant in front of you, having been a privately owned and family-operated business headquartered right here in Newport Beach. Of course, with a proven track record, working in the communities that they invest in, including in Newport through Uptown Newport. Developed through a community-minded approach to planning, which really is centered on the idea of reflecting community vision and values, and the projects proposed and operated really leads to the core mission and success that the Passern Group brings to the communities that it invests in. And the group is here dedicated to long-term commitment and investment, working deeply with the communities and developing meaningful relationships with those areas that they propose these projects to operate within. You've mentioned the, the project at Uptown Newport. We hope to demonstrate that 1300 Bristol is really an evolution of the product delivered at this location, learning from opportunities to enhance and embellish on the successes of that project, and reflect those improvements and enhancements here at 1300 Bristol is really a core component of, of the project before you. So providing a bit more information, of course, the vicinity of the site's already been presented at Spruce and Bristol. And an example of the existing conditions on the site, a two-story office building approximately 33, 33,000 square feet, located at that corner of Bruce and, of Spruce and Bristol. The project has really been designed, and we're going to spend a few more minutes talking about the architecture and landscape plans, to fit really harmoniously within the existing fabric of this area, really finding opportunities to enhance the relationship between this project site, its neighbors, including Plaza Newport, which obviously has a very cooperative lifestyle with new residents coming into this area and finding a safe way to provide eyes on the street, and really activate this space and create that mixed-use village in the airport area. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our technical team, and they'll be able to walk through some components of that project design.
Thank you.
Should I remember the right button? All right. Thank you, Amanda. Good evening. My name is Erwin Yao, Principal at TCA Architects. I'm excited to be in front of you guys again, as part of another great team that Passern has put together for our project here in Newport Beach. As Ken mentioned, our strategy for this project was pretty simple. Take what we liked and learned from Uptown Newport and other projects we've done with them in previous cities, and apply them here. So let me kind of take you through a tour of the project. The left image here is the ground-level plan. This is where we have guest and resident parking. Guests would come off of Spruce, Spruce Avenue, come through the driveway and into the parking garage. They have dedicated parking spaces there that has views towards the lobby and leasing areas. There's 34 guest spaces. Residents would be coming off of Bristol into the driveway and into the ground-level garage, where they would have parking on the ground level, as well as two levels into the basement as well. On the bottom left-hand corner of the project, we have the leasing office, lobby, mail, and the business center. We're seeing many of these, like the business center, become more and more important, especially these days as we continue to work from home or have a hybrid work schedule. On the opposite corner, we have a dog spa and a dog run on the ground level as well. On the right-hand side, it's a typical podium level. Again, 193 units with a mix of studios, ones and two bedrooms. We're really efficient design, just based on the shape of the site, but it's that the units surrounding a very active courtyard with a clubhouse, a clubroom and fitness area totaling almost 4,000 square feet of many spaces. As we look at the architecture, this is a view of the perspective from Bristol and Spruce. Our design approach really is to celebrate the corners and really emphasize those areas that we feel is going to be the most important. We're doing that by cladding the corners of the project with a stone tile, the same one that we've used in One Uptown. We feel that that material really shows well, it wears well, and it has a really nice, rich feeling to it. So we're applying that here as well. The ground level of the architecture here, again on the corner of Spruce and Bristol, is the leasing business center, and that's going to be surrounded in storefront to really activate that edge. The next perspective is a view from Spruce. Again, we are applying stone at the corner of this, this portion of the project as well. We're breaking up the mass in the middle with different color stucco and different plane breaks. The corners are accentuated with corner balconies, metal railings, and metal awnings. And those corner units have, the upper levels of corner units have higher ceilings and higher windows as well. Just a quick slide to really look at the elevations. This was part of the package, the cemental package, really to show that we've designed the building in all four sides, really has no backside to the project, 360 degrees of architecture, and we've applied the same kind of design thinking on all four sides of the project. And then briefly, a building section shows the height of the building, again showing one level of garage on grade, two levels subterranean, and five levels apartments above that. We explored a lot of different ways and how we would design this building, and even with two levels of garage above grade, but that would raise the building one level higher. We felt that this was more appropriate solution, even though technically it costs more to go into the ground. And then the last slide for me, really just a material page, showing the different materials that I explained earlier on the project, the stone material, which we have a sample of, if you want to see that, a mix of different stucco colors that surround the body of the building. And I'm here to answer any questions at the end, if you have any. Let me introduce Matt Jackson with MJS, our landscape architect.
Thank you.
Erwin, Matt Jackson, MJS Design Group. We're landscape architects, and we're located here in Newport Beach. This first slide, what we do in our office is really placemaking. These are apartments, but we really want them to be apartment homes. And our first path to any job is to look at materials and textures and scale, and we really want to create comfortable environments. These are bigger buildings, they're a little more dense, so having opportunities to entertain a small group, large groups, getting the fit, the finish right for this project, and really embracing the outdoor environment is really important. So hopefully, you can kind of see some of that in the quality of the, of the materials that we'd like to use. This is a composite plan, as Erwin mentioned. We're looking at the outside of the building, so our scope is the perimeter landscaping. We have a central courtyard, really that's going to be where you do most of your outdoor living, and then a rooftop deck, which is a great amenity that can serve smaller groups, but it also just gets you up high in views, so it's a, a nice amenity for the apartment users. And on the ground, there's no gates, it's completely open, so in the evenings, you could take a stroll around the back of the project. There is a off-leash dog run, an important amenity. Most people have pets, and they'll use the, the space. And then from a landscape perspective, we're using the landscape on the outside to soften the building, and then looking at some iconic architecture on the corner to kind of find the front door. The podium deck is really where you're going to spend your time in the outdoor environment, and so for us, it's really important to find spaces for two people, six people, where you're going to get some sun, where you're going to get some shade. A lot of people will just take a book and read it at the, finding those shaded environments and the sunny environment. So pools pushed back, that's your best sun exposure. Indoor/outdoor is really important for landscape, especially here in California, so having open spaces at the club, really an extension of the indoors, the outdoor space is really important. So hopefully, we've created an active space, and people want to spend time there, outdoor fitness, things that you would see in a nice, high-end project. Talked about the rooftop deck. Again, this could be small parties, but it's maybe just in the evening, you get a drink, and you sit by the fire. Great amenity for this part of the world. You don't see a lot of rooftop decks, but this is a great amenity. Want to kind of show off some of the other work that Passern's done. This is the One Uptown project. Again, high-quality materials, high-quality finishes, really trying to find spots for the entire group to use. Do some of those same thoughts on this project. For the landscape, it's going to be sensible, it's going to be low water use, it's going to be long-lasting, and really easily maintained, so really important to have that in the landscape. I'm going to bring Amanda up to finish the presentation, but I'm here for any questions on the landscape.
Thank you so much.
The group is proud to have received over 17 letters of support for this project, particularly from local businesses. Excited about the opportunity for new residents to be in the airport area, contributing to the local economy throughout the day. And we hope that through our presentation, and certainly with any questions we may be able to answer of yours, we've demonstrated that the Passern Group is deeply committed to the community of Newport Beach. We hope that this project really reflects and respects the local community and values that are so important here, contributes to the overall housing stock here in the community, helps address a portion of your arena. I know that's on everyone's minds right now, but providing both market rate and affordable prod, units within the same project, creating that mixed-income environment is a particularly unique opportunity. Supporting those local businesses, and then ultimately, reflecting the vision of, of the community and of the city here in the airport area, really investing and helping to create a stepping stone to transform the airport area into this walkable mixed-use village that really can help thrive in the coming, in the future, as it starts to embrace that mix of, of residential and non-residential uses. So with that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for your patience, and of course, we're all available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Nice-looking project. Do we have any questions or comments from the dais before we go to the public? Councilman Dixon?
Well, I guess we could go to the public. I just want to say, it impressed me just hearing the summation of the firm's investments in Uptown Newport. It's remarkable. So there's One Uptown Newport, there's your 4400 Van Carmon, and then the 1300 Bristol by one investor, one development company. And Mr. Passern, you are a resident of Newport Beach, correct? So you have, I presume, invested interest in, in improving our city and investing in a part of our city that's been targeted for mixed-use development now for several years. I appreciate, go ahead.
If I, if we do a bad job, I can't go to the market. That's a problem.
People know where to find you.
So, no, obviously, we're, we're excited about the, the, the opportunity to create this environment, to help the city with its vision.
I appreciate that, and the quality of Uptown, and we were just there Friday for the dedication of the park. I am concerned going forward that as we develop more plans for Uptown Newport area, and hopefully with your involvement, that we can give, get more park space and just walk-around space that people are going to want to enjoy. And I know you care about that part of the community, and I would just be, that would be my only recommendation, but I'm appreciative of your investment in our community, and to enjoy your success, continued success, so I'm supportive, but don't want to get ahead of ourselves. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Simone, is there a rough estimate of what the developer fees would be for this project?
I have an estimate for specifically the development agreement fees for those 77 transferred units. Both of them are subject to change. One of them is subject to an interest charge, and one of them adjusts with CPI, but as of now, and an estimate for the park fee for those 77 units is $2 million, and an estimate for the public benefit fee would be $3 million for those 77 units.
And so those would be fees that could go to community improvement?
Park fees specifically for parks, and public benefit is at council's discretion.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I, this is, this is the future of the, of the airport area, and it's a great project. And Uptown was a great project, and the scale's right, it's not over the top, the materials are there. Passern Group has a track record already in the city, so this is, this is what we need to provide, not only the, the affordable, low-income housing, and very low-income housing, but we've got to supply market-rate housing as well. It's, I think, as we've all seen, it just gets snapped up as soon as it's presented on the market in products like this, and residential and everything else in this town. So it's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I took the Santa Ana Heights representative who speaks for that community across the way there through their project, and when it was all done, I turned to him and said, "So what are you, what are you going to tell your neighbors about this?" And he said, "I'm going to suggest we all move there." So, so I thought, "Well, there's no opposition there." And he, he was just so impressed with the quality and all the amenities and such. It's a wonderful project. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, see, no other requests to speak on the dais. Let's go out to the public. Please come forward. Public comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As we heard at the study session a little earlier today, this half of the Newport area, called Newport Place, is a planned community, with a requirement in it set by councils long ago, that residential development in it needs a 30% affordable component. So I don't know if it was clear from the presentation. And in theory, this is a project in Newport Place that is 30% affordable, and then through the transfer of development rights, has added to it a, in theory, completely market-rate project that dilutes the affordable component down to 15%. Apparently, through a transfer of development rights, you don't have to honor the 30% commitment when you build something in this area, despite that. And I think we saw on the slides earlier today that the 15% entitles one to the maximum density bonus, if I'm not mistaken. What not totally clear to me is the long list of incentives, relief from zoning, that, the 15% is sufficient to qualify for that. None of that is based on the 30% amount of the original project, because it would, as I told the Planning Commission, perhaps incorrectly, it seemed like a little sleight of hand to get all the incentives for the affordable project and then be using them not for that, to be building this market-rate project that's, in theory, kind of going on top of it. And speaking on top of it and not being of outlander scale, although it's not, and there seems to be no community objection to it, I think our Airport Land Use Commission would probably be a little surprised to see residential sprouting up in this area of any substantial height, because this is where the little airplanes taking off to the south, the little propeller ones, to avoid going into Santa Ana Heights, turn and go to the north, so they'd kind of be flying over this area. But you may be wondering, the Airport Land Commission has nothing to say about this because it does not require, apparently, a amendment to our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, see, now I'm going to close the public hearing component and move the item. Okay, great. Let's vote.
The motion carried unanimously, 7-0.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Passern. Okay, on to the next item. Current business appointment to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals to fill an unscheduled vacancy. I'll do a quick public comments on this item. Any public comments on this item? Okay, see, now I'm going to turn it over to the clerk.
I will be collecting the paper ballots, and the nominee must receive at least four votes in order to be appointed. Councilmember Brenner voted for Michael Manning. Councilmember Avery voted for Michael Manning. Councilmember Avery voted for Michael Manning. Councilmember Dixon, Michael Manning. Councilmember O'Neill, Michael Manning. Councilmember Duffield, Michael Manning. Mayor Protem Blom, Michael Manning. Mayor Muldoon, Michael Manning. So Michael Manning is appointed, 7-0.
Thank you. We'd just like to encourage all applicants that some of our best members of our commissions applied numerous times before they got accepted and that tends to be the trend in Newport Beach, so much community involvement. Thank you, everyone, for applying and being involved. Okay, item number 17, resolution regarding amended restated employment agreement for the city attorney.
And I'll be recusing myself based on personal financial effect. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll give them a second and then it's over to you, Barbara.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm required under the government code to give a brief overview of the proposed new agreement. The terms and conditions of Mr. Harp's current employment are outlined in a sixth amended and restated employment agreement that was effective January 26th of 2021. His contract was discussed by the council during closed sessions on February 22nd and March 8th. The new term provides for an employment agreement through December 20th, 2028. Upon the effective date, there is a 5% merit adjustment. Cost of living adjustments are tied to those received by executive management employees beginning January 2023 and each January thereafter. In terms of deferred compensation, the agreement proposes for city contributions to a 401A account as follows. On the effective date of the agreement, a contribution of $14,500. This figure increases by $2,500 in January of each year for the remaining term of the employment agreement. There are also certain provisions tied to severance. If he's terminated without cause, the city will provide a cash settlement equal to his monthly salary multiplied by the number of months remaining on the unexpired term of the agreement, subject to certain conditions. And I can answer any questions if you have them, but that concludes my summary.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. And to supplement what we just heard, I'm not sure if it's clear, this is going from an annual contract to a five-year, nine-month contract. And the last, I would like to highlight the last item we heard, which is about the severance provision, which we just heard, was that a future council who wanted to change the city attorney would have to pay the existing city attorney his entire salary for the remaining part of that five years and nine months, which would be pretty constraining on a future city council having to pay two city attorneys. But one of the conditions that was not mentioned was that there is a cap on that and the cap is 18 months' salary. In my opinion, 18 months is still extremely generous and as you did with the city manager, giving her the same provision essentially. I continue to think that six months' severance is pretty much the industry standard. It has been what we've had in Newport Beach forever, as far as I know, and I think it would be adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, if you want to give a quick clarification on that and how that diminishes every year, he is closer to the contract's end.
Excuse me, that provision is codified in the government code. I was trying to find the specific section, but Mr. Mosher points out that the six months, that would be consistent in a way with this agreement because the agreement that he is previously under is basically for a year, so that six months is providing for half of that term in the event that he's terminated without cause. So similarly with this longer agreement, the severance package is extended sort of prorita, up to certain limitations. The 18 months would be the maximum.
And the 18 months, he says, required by code?
It's provided for under the code, so the council is completely within its purview to be able to put that into the agreement.
It's provided, not required.
It's provided, not required.
In this case, as he goes down to four years, it's a one-year tail.
Well, specifically if he's terminated without cause prior to March 22nd of 2026, it's an 18-month severance package. If he's terminated without cause after March 22nd, 2026, it's limited to 12 months.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any questions or comments from the dais?
I'll move the item.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions to reconsider? Okay, seeing none. Before I adjourn, Councilwoman Dixon is going to adjourn in honor of residents.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm speaking to adjourn the meeting in honor of Mr. Andrew J. Dossett III. He was born January 5th, 1928 and passed away January 2nd of this year. He was raised in Beverly Hills where he attended school and he joined the Marine, US Marine Corps in 1945 and he enrolled in the Foreign Trade School at USC. In 1950, he volunteered for the Korean War and served 11 months in a marine-lined company. He owned two businesses, Andrew Dossett Imports, Inc., which imported and exported a high-pressure ferrous and non-ferrous tubing, and Seagull Marine, which imported British seagull engines and Avon inflatable boats, Avon whitewater river rafts and various unique yachting equipment, including the first fiberglass bottom inflatables. In 1984, Andrew sold his business and with his wife Corinne commenced ocean cruising. Sailing catch Bonny Dune, together they crossed the Atlantic Ocean three times and the Pacific Ocean one time, Singapore to Catalina Island. In 2003, Andrew made a solo passage on Bonny Dune to Hawaii to earn the Joe Antrim Race Against Aging trophy for single-handers over 75. He was a 50-year member of the Newport Harbor Yacht Club, Cruising Club of America, Ocean Cruising Club, and he leaves Corinne, his wife of 50 years, daughter Andrea, and Jim Shea of Rancho Mirage, and son Ben and Susan Dossett of Malibu, six grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. And wanted to speak in his honor. I did not know the gentleman, but he had a very fine life story. So thank you.
He did. Thank you for taking the time to do that. And I think Councilman Avery wanted to add a couple of comments.
Yes, I knew Andy quite well and I think Duffy did too. Just a local legend. You know, they went around the world in this very small boat. It was 37 feet, but it was narrow and low to the water, so it was even smaller than 37 feet. But my favorite story, he single-handed back from Hawaii, so you know, 2,400 miles by himself on the boat, and he sailed into Catalina and down the coast and he sailed in this little cove, White's Cove, where the yacht clubs have some shoreside facilities and it was a summer day and there are a bunch of people there and they, you know, and this guy comes up and he said, "Oh, how was your trip?", thinking he'd come across from, you know, from Newport. And he's, "Oh, it was fine, it was fine." He's, "Well, how long did it take you?" "Oh, 23 days."
Did he have a beer or did he look to settle?
Andy always had kind of a rugged look, you know, but he was just a great guy, great sense of humor and yeah, it's fantastic and it's really great. He got so he couldn't really sail the boat anymore and he had it for sale, which really killed him and it was hard and he tried to talk his son into buying it and finally his son did. And so Ben Dossett has the boat up in LA Harbor and is sailing it to Catalina and, you know, lives on, so, but just a wonderful guy, old-time Newport guy. Yeah, it was great. Thanks.
Thank you. We are adjourned.